Hello.
Hi. Hi, Allison.
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
Funny, you don't look like Brian Russell. I'm just saying.
Okay, Paula, do you have Bruce muted? Um, Michael Bayok.
Hi, everyone.
How are you?
So that's okay. Hi, Mike.
Hi.
I don't know who, um...
Maxine Terry's here. How are you doing?
Hi. Um...
I need to start the video, that'll help.
Hi, Terry, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay. Hi, Tammy.
Hi, Maxine, how are you?
Okay, how are you?
Good.
Okay, um...
Hello?
Hi, Meredith. Um... Do you have Bob Key? I don't know who AWP Lawrence is.
Hello, Maxine, look, we're not checking in.
Um, Hannah Bucko is gonna be Tom Bucko.
Can you see me?
No, you gotta turn on your video, bottom left.
Bottom left.
Where it says stop video, you click that.
There we go.
You're many.
Hi, Mr. Granata.
Hello, Maxine.
Whoa.
You see me, Andrew, the engineer?
Hi, Tom. Yes, Anthony will be here. Terry's already here as the planner. We need Mike Lexstein. Hi, George.
How you doing, Maxine?
Okay. I guess Bob Key is on, but he's muted.
All right.
Which is okay, she's the third applicant.
It's like my head is too big.
There he is.
Tom, you have the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Tom, you have the agenda in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So just follow it, we have a flag right here.
It's like my head is cut off, though. Can you fix that?
We know what the top of your head looks like.
There's not much hair on it, anyway.
All right, Maxine, you all ready to go?
Well, we don't have my flag yet, do we? No, I don't have mic yet.
Okay.
So let's wait for Mike.
Let me get these speakers closer.
Anthony's coming on. Um, I don't know where Mike is.
Wait a minute, who else am I missing here?
Gary, Gary Trappuccino.
Hello, Mr. Wolf.
Hello, yes.
How you doing, Mr. Wolf?
I'm doing good, okay, I see you.
Okay. Okay, he's with me, Mr. Wolf.
Okay, okay.
Let me, um... He's probably, hold on. David on yet? David's not on yet, right?
Where's Mark?
He was having trouble before.
Hey, George.
What's up, Tommy?
This is ridiculous.
You wanna have like a Christmas Zoom dinner?
I'll tell them.
You know what's happening?
I'll tell them.
You gonna have a drink?
No. I've drank.
Why's this thing booming in like this?
I've had about thirty gallons a day, man.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah.
That's two ones, that's six gallons of crap.
Six gallons, I'm gonna use some of it, Rob. I ain't gonna...
I had a ten gallon night.
Yep. That sounds good. Yeah, we're gonna whack up about... No, me and Rudy, the shoemaker, it's up.
Are you getting one? Six thirty. You forgot. Okay, we're waiting for you. Okay, bye-bye. All right, Mark's coming on. Um...
Enable pan tilt.
David's not on yet? My camera, I don't know, I just... My computer the other day, and... My camera went crazy. Um, Tom, once Mike gets on, Mark gets on, even if, I think I need David for a quorum.
Do we have one?
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, if David's not on, once Mark gets on, we can start the meeting anyway.
Okay, so we're waiting for the attorney?
Right, our attorney, Mark. I should have six people here tonight. Terry, did you see the email I sent back to Jason?
Regarding the other application?
The one, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I thought that was good.
I tried to like put the fear in him, and then I said, just joking.
Maxine is Jason's longtime manager. I'll take whatever help I can get.
Enable panning first. Oh. Where's the Zoom controls?
You okay, Tom?
If you scroll to the bottom of your screen, you'll see that there's a mute button, stop video, participants, chat, share screen. It's got all your controls at the bottom.
I just want, it keeps panning in and like cutting my head off.
I can see your head.
Yeah.
That's not, I don't think that's Zoom, I think that's just your computer camera.
You can see the top of my head, 'cause right now I can't see the top of...
You're okay, we can see you.
Maybe you can tilt your screen up a little bit, and that'll solve the problem. There you go.
You're fine. How long does it take to hear you?
Yeah, oh, that's much better. Man, here it goes again. So Mark was the one who forgot, huh?
Yeah, Mark forgot that we were starting at six thirty. All right, he's connecting now.
Here he is.
Hello.
Okay. Allison.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I apologize, I still had seven thirty in my book, so I, that's my fault.
Terry, you're real early, Doug.
What?
You're real early, then.
Yeah. Thank you, Maxine, for calling.
That's a good way of looking at it.
Yeah.
Okay, Tom, you can start.
Okay, so we're gonna draw the meeting to order. Everybody, please rise and say to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, and every justice for all. Okay. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was sent to the appropriate newspapers on August 16th, 2020. Maxine, please do the roll call.
Mr. Brenner, Mr. Bucko.
Here.
Mr. Bayok.
All right, here.
Mr. Falco.
Here.
Mrs. Friedman.
Here.
Mr. Phillips. Mr. Phelps. Mr. Sinclair.
Here.
Okay. Can we please have a motion to approve or disapprove the meetings from the last meeting, August 12th, 2020, public meeting?
I make a motion.
Second.
All those... Are you gonna, you gotta do it individually, Maxine?
No, voice vote, Tom.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain. I abstain. I wasn't present.
All right, the ayes have it. All right, Mark, is there anything you'd like to address prior to the start of the meeting?
Um, is there something you want me to address?
No, I'm saying, you know, sometimes you like to...
No, Tom, I'm good.
Okay, so we're gonna move right into the meeting here, and under new business, first applicant, V16, bearish, 102, Hammond. And...
Number one, Paula?
Yes. Is Mr. Hammond here, or?
I think Mrs. Hammond's here.
I don't know if we did the reading of the Open Public Meetings Act notice.
We did, Tom read it.
Okay.
I heard it.
Yeah, you read it.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is a request by Mrs. Hammond. This was a approval that the board granted back in 2016. So it's over four years old at this point. It expired back in 2017 by virtue of the clause within the resolution that requires a permit to be sought within one year. So it expired in 2017, and we're in 2020. She's now coming and asking for an extension of it. I'm a little, I don't know how the board does that, being that it expired over three years ago.
Correct.
Long time, I mean, I can see if they got an extension every year, but this is like three years of no activity.
Right, I just don't know how the board can legally do this. And the only reason I say that is, and I know, Ms. Hammond, I know you're here, is that anyone who may have, you know, known about this application when you brought it back in 2016, at this point, it's so long ago that they, and the House suddenly went up, they would be calling us, saying, hey, when was this approved? It's just, it's so long ago, I think your best, my recommendation to the board is that, and to Ms. Hammond, is that she refile the application and come back. You could use this, you know, the previous approval as a basis for why you should be entitled to variance relief, but I just don't know how the board can hear it, can approve something that expired over three years ago.
I agree with that. When I was thinking that, is there anybody, you know, on Zoom or in the audience, so to speak, you know, here to hear this application? And quite frankly, it's like you said, three or four years old, so...
All right, and, 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 Mr. Chairman, to add to that, no one would know...
Correct.
Other than Ms. Hammond, that this was even being heard by the board tonight. No one got, no one got noticed about it.
I agree. Does anybody else on the board have an opinion as to how we should move forward, or?
I'm not, I'll be honest, without seeing the plans at this point and everything, I'm probably not comfortable with putting, with extending this. I think she needs to come forward with all her information again, if she wants it at this point, I mean, we're talking three years.
And that's the other thing, Ms. Hammond, just so you understand, I mean, this is not a personal thing, I know you're probably going not to be happy about where the board's headed, probably. Is that when, when the board considers an extension request, it's gotta take into consideration what the circumstances are of the neighborhood, whether anything's changed from when the application was originally granted. All that's gotta be taken into consideration, and, and three years is just a very long time. And it's, it's sort of unfair to the neighbors to, to keep something alive that, that extends back that far.
Now, I'm sure, Mark, I'm sure this thing has been granted, granted extensions in the previous years, right?
I don't think Maxine has it, I don't believe so.
No, this is the first time.
The first, the first time she's appeared.
Well...
Too long.
So, so, Ms. Hammond, again, I mean, if the board's gonna file through and rejecting this request, don't take this as a rejection of the application itself. You know, I'd encourage you, if you still wanna do this, which obviously you do, to just refile the application and come back. And the board may, I mean, it's different, it's a different board at this point, but, but, but don't take this as a rejection of your request. It shouldn't be a reason that you don't reappear.
Um... So, what, what I wrote was, is not even gonna be considered?
I don't know how we can consider it, because your approval expired back three, over three years ago. I mean, what, where were you, the question would be, and again, I'm not blaming you, you're not a lawyer, but, but the question would be, where were you in 2017, 2018, 2019, and now 2020? So it's over, it's over three years where your approval's been null and void. And you're asking, you're asking this board to refile something that they approved back in 2016.
And, and your application, you're asking to build a single-family home.
Right.
And, you know, I think the board would like to see the plans, which you probably have, it's, it's just that it's way too old.
Well, I have, I have the plans right here, and, and the plans hasn't changed, like...
Yeah, but, but, Ms. Hammond, the problem is, again, is that none of your neighbors, first of all, this is a different board membership than was here in 2016. Your neighbors aren't on notice of this application this evening. People who were noticed back in 2016 might not even be the same people who now live in your neighborhood. It just isn't appropriate for the board to try to consider something from 2016 at this point. You gotta come back.
Yeah, I agree.
Long. Okay.
But, but again, I don't get to speak for the board, so, I mean, it's really up to the board, and, and I guess the appropriate motion, someone's gotta make a motion of either to reject the proposal or grant it, but that's my advice.
Well, let me just make sure, is there anybody in this Zoom meeting here for this application?
Again, no one would know about it.
Well, I know, but, you know, going, doing, you know, protocol, and...
I understand.
Nobody answered, so is there a motion to...
Can I, can I just say this one thing?
Sure.
Reason, the, the reason why I, I put in for this is because, you know, Row Street had a whole new water line go through. So I had to... Before I can even start building, I had to put like, like fifteen thousand dollars to, to get a water line, a sewage line from the street tapped into my lot before the road was paved, because I wasn't able to open the road for five years. And then, within that time, from 2006, there was a water break in that same, in that same road. So there was a water break, it came out of nowhere, and the whole road was shut down again. So the whole road had to be repaved, so this, this all takes time. And then, you know, dealing with contractors and have to go back and renegotiate and extend another...
Ms. Hammond, Hammond, we appreciate that, but the problem is your approval expired in 2017. And, and your, and your resolution that was adopted at that time clearly said that. So while everything you're saying are understandable reasons why you didn't proceed, your approval expired over three years ago.
So what I had to do was come back and ask for an extension then?
Right, in 2017, you should have come back and said, hey, my approval's expiring, this is expiring this year. I'm gonna, can I please have an extension? And then it would have made more sense, but to come back and...
I didn't know I had to do that, honestly.
And I'm not blaming you, you're not, I'm not blaming you, no one's blaming you. They, they, but the ma, but the fact of the matter is, I think you did have an attorney at the time, you know...
I don't even know if he's still alive, I honestly, I don't know.
But, but again, but that's not really the issue. The, the issue is just it's too old, and again, as I said earlier, don't take this as a rejection of what you're asking for, for the application. Come back, file a new application, do it right, and come back in and get a new approval, or try to get a new approval. But the board can't approve something that, that expired over three years ago.
Okay. Um...
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, if you wanna have a, go back to your, your calling for a vote.
Right. Is there a motion to...
Paula, you can take that down.
I, I guess, motion to the...
Deny.
Deny. Motion to deny the application due to the...
Extension.
Notice to deny the extent, motion to deny the extension based upon the time that has passed since it expired.
Correct. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Now, you gotta do roll call.
We need the motion.
George.
And who second?
Me.
Mike, okay. Mr. Bucko?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Bayok?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mrs. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sinclair?
Yes.
All right, so I'll, Maxine, I'll have a, and Ms. Hammond, I'll have a resolution at the next meeting, clarifying this, and I will make very clear in that resolution, Ms. Hammond, that this is not about the merits of your application, and that you're welcome to refile the application, it's purely due to the time that's passed.
Tammy, give me a call tomorrow, and we'll go over that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Take care, Ms. Hammond.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, number two, application V20-108, gun.
All right, Mr. Chairman, are the guns here?
Right here.
She's here, Meredith Gunn is here. All right, so, so, Mrs. Gunn, before you start, I'm just going to, um... We have exhibit, I'm just gonna mark in the exhibits I have, which is Exhibit A1 is the zoning board application filed on July 22nd, 2020. Exhibit A2 is the survey dated November 20th, 2017, with the location of the proposed deck shown. Exhibit A3 are the deck plans, which consist of two sheets. And there are two variances involved in this application, and, Maxine, can you give me some clarity on the, the rear yard setback? It says thirteen feet exists and twenty feet required. They're not, they're not, they're not increasing that with the deck, that's already the situation? Am I reading it correctly?
Yes. From the back of the house.
That's a pre-existing condition?
Yeah, from the back of the house. Um, hold on, I'm looking for the, uh... I don't have the zoning in the house, you know.
Other photos also, we should mark the photos in as well.
Hold on one second.
Okay, yeah.
According to the zoning denial, um... Existing rear yard setback is thirteen feet, with three feet is proposed and twenty feet required.
So three feet are proposed?
Thirteen feet.
Thirteen exists.
Existing is thirteen feet, three feet is proposed, and twenty feet is required.
Okay, I'm glad I asked, yeah, so, so, so there was just a mistype on the agenda, which confused me. All right, so, so three feet is proposed. Okay. Um, Paul, how many, Paul, can you just go back so I can know how many photographs we have here? Because we don't, the board does not have the photographs.
They went out with your packages.
I didn't see them, Maxine, but the actual, does anybody else have those?
No, I don't.
Yeah, Maxine, they were not in the packages.
I didn't get anything on this.
All I had was the survey and the plans. So, Paul, how many do we have?
There is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Ten photos? All right, so I'm gonna mark in collectively as Exhibit A4, the series of photographs, and we'll note that there are ten of them. All right, so, uh... Ms. Gunn, did you wanna raise your hand, and I will swear you in? Do you swear in testimony you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self, you God?
Yeah.
Okay, I just state your name for the record?
Meredith Gunn.
Thank you. Do you just wanna tell the board what exactly that you are looking to do?
Yes, sir, so we are looking to construct a ten-by-twenty-two-foot deck on the back of our house. I would like to note, it actually isn't three feet on the side of the house, it is a foot and a half. As you can see from the picture that's on the screen, our house is only a foot and a half off of the property line on the left-hand side.
We have that, we have 1.5 feet on the side yard, it was the rear yard setback.
Okay, okay, my apologies.
It's only three feet, that's okay.
Okay. And so we would like to essentially put a deck on the back of our house to be able to expand our living space as an additional, as an improvement to our property, as well as with the pandemic, I've been working from home since the beginning of March, and immunocompromised, so I'm not going out. And we had actually thought this would be a great addition where we could actually, you know, increase our quality of life, given that this is where I spend the majority of my time since the pandemic, and probably for the next several months until there's some resolution with that. In addition, our house backs up to a marsh where there are no other homes, the homes that are next to our property, like this is, this picture is from my neighbor's deck, actually, that is, you know, so it wouldn't necessarily impair their view, we've talked with our neighbors, and they support this. And we feel like it would not be nuisance or impede anyone's current view or situation in a negative way. We're looking to improve the value of our home, which we know then improves the value of the neighborhood and, as well as the tax revenue.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, yeah, does the board have any questions?
I guess I have a question. Is this, Ms. Gunn?
Yes, sir.
Do you ever intend to enclose that in and extend the roof and make it like permanently inside?
No, sir.
Do you just, you would just want that as an outside deck?
Yes, sir. I'm not sure if you've had a, okay.
Say that. Say that again?
No, please, go ahead. I interrupted you.
No, 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 I just, I just, for the record, I just wanted to just know that you have no plans on down the road, uh, enclosing that and making it permanently like in, inside part of the house.
No, sir. Um, as you can see from this picture, our house backs up to the marsh. It's absolutely beautiful. Um, the breeze back there is amazing, um, and most of that portion of the house is under shade. So we wouldn't be putting a roof up, nor will be making that, um, you know, inside living space.
Okay. Any, any other questions from the board? I guess that's a no?
The 1 and 1/2 feet to the one side is pretty close, but the whole house is already 1 and 1/2 feet, so really doesn't make much of a difference at this point. I would prefer to see it like at least 3 feet off the side yard. But since the house is already 1 and 1/2, I don't think it's gonna matter.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions? Um, is anybody here for this application that would like to speak?
From the public.
Um, I'm gonna take that as a no. So. Would anybody would like to make a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Mr. Bucko?
Yes.
Mr. Bayok?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mrs. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sinclair?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Hammond, congratulations.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bucko, and thank you, um, to the board for your time and for hearing our case. I really appreciate it.
Call me tomorrow, Meredith, I'll tell you what goes on next.
Okay, thanks so much, Maxine. Is it okay for me to log off now? Or do you want me to stay for the, okay? Thank you again so much, appreciate it.
Watch the fun.
It was entertaining at the beginning. Take care.
Bye-bye, have a good night.
You too.
Maxine?
Um, can we unmute Anthony?
Maxine?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Robert, how are you? Okay, can we, um?
We can hear you.
Okay.
One more person.
Okay.
I finally got on.
How you doing, Dave?
All right.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, the third application of the evening. D 19 dash 110, Travaccino.
All right, and Mr. Chairman, as the applicant is setting up, I think, I think I saw Mr. Granata is here. Um, the exhibits that I have to mark are Exhibit A1 is a zoning board application filed back on October 14th, 2019. Exhibit A2 is the plot and grading plan dated September 9th, 2019. Exhibit A3 are the architectural plans dated August 22nd, 2019. Exhibit A4 is the correspondence to the Manzos dated September 12th, 2019, showing that that correspondence with certified mail was returned unaccepted. Then I have, those are the only exhibits I have from the applicant, the pre-mark. I then have Exhibit B1, as in Board 1, for the CME Engineering Review Letter dated August 19th, 2020. And then I have, because as Exhibit B2, the RBE Planning Review Letter dated August 19th, 2020. And, uh, let me just swear in before Mr. Granata starts, let me swear in Anthony. And let me, and who do we have from RBE? It's.
Teresa.
Hey, Terry, uh, yes, I just wanted the board to realize that that is you. So I'm gonna have Terry and Anthony both raise their right hand and swear that any testimony they're gonna give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-y God.
I do.
Thank you both, and, uh, and then you're gonna certify that everything in your letters are accurate, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you very much. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Granata, if you want to begin and make your introduction.
Yes, good evening, members of the board. Louis Granata appearing on behalf of Gary Travaccino, the applicant. Mark, you've marked all the exhibits. There was another exhibit that was submitted by Bob Key. Uh, I'm gonna put it up. It's a plot showing houses in a 500-foot radius. Did you receive that?
Um.
Maxine, you have it, don't you?
I have it.
Yeah, I don't know that. I didn't see it. I'm not saying, I mean, yeah, does the board have that?
No, because I just got it.
Oh, you just got it, okay. So, uh, Exhibit, what is, what, uh, Mr. Granata, what is it again?
It's a 500-foot radius map for the property prepared by Bob Key Engineering.
Is there a date on it?
Uh, Bob, is there a date on this?
August 24th.
Okay, thank you.
The reason it's so late is we didn't receive the, uh, planner's report dated the, uh, the 19th until Monday, and we took care of that, and the only way of getting it over to you is, uh, to send it to Maxine. However, we can, uh, put it up, I think.
Yeah, we got it. It's, it's up, I think it's up on the screen. Is that it up on the screen right now? No, or? Maxine, is it online to show us?
No.
Oh, we want to be able to see it.
Bringing something to get it online from there. That's what I was told.
Are you, Mr. Key, can you, can you, if we give you access to share your screen, can you share your screen to show it?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna mark that as Exhibit A5. And then Paul, we can do that, right? Give him control to share?
Yeah, he'll have to go down on the screen and hit share. Let me stop this one. Uh, you wanna try to scan this in or not? There we go.
They're gonna be able, Maxine, they're gonna be able to share it themselves. There it is.
Okay, that's the same thing.
All right, so we're looking at Exhibit A5, and, uh, Mr. Granata, do you want me to swear Mr. Key in?
Uh, the applicant, Mr. Gary Travaccino, and Mr. Andrew Wu, who is here on behalf of the applicant, and Mr. Key, who's also on behalf of the applicant, those three witnesses.
All right, well, let's do them one at a time. Who do you want first?
Gary Travaccino.
All right, Mr. Travaccino, if you're here, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-y God?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Andrew Wu, you wanna swear him in also, or you want?
And who is, and what is Mr., what's Mr. Wu's affiliation with this?
Mr. Wu prepared the grading and, uh, the, I'm sorry, he prepared, uh, the plot A or Exhibit A.
The plot and grading plan was done by him?
Yes. And also the architectural plans, number 3.
Okay, Mr. Wu? Do you swear a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-y God?
Yes, I do.
All right, and you are a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Are you also a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
No, I'm a licensed, the land surveyor.
All right, so, so you didn't prepare the architectural plans?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Oh, okay, that's, I just thought that's what Mr. Granata said. I apologize.
Yeah, my mistake.
Okay, so, so he's just here for, um, for the engineering, okay?
And you want to swear Mr. Key also?
Yes, Mr. Key? Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-y God?
Yes, sir, I do.
And you are a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Louis Granata appearing on behalf of Gary Travaccino. Mr. Travaccino is under contract to purchase 2, 102 Willow Avenue from Mary Nevin. One of the conditions of the contract is that he obtain permit in order to build a home. We filed this application shortly after he entered into the contract, and as you know, because of the conditions that we're experiencing, this matter has been put off until tonight. Uh, Mr. Travaccino submitted the grading plans and the architectural plans, and he's reviewed the reports from both engineer and planner, and, uh, we will address each one of those. Uh, you have by Exhibit, uh, number 4, uh, Mr. Travaccino attempted to acquire adjoining property in order to lessen the, uh, the variances required, but there was absolutely no response from the, uh, the adjoining property owner.
And I, Mr. Granata, let me interrupt for a second on that one. Um, what we have by Exhibit A4 is a copy of a certified letter sent to the Manzos, and it was returned unaccepted. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Was there any other form of attempt of communication with the Manzos, or was the only form of communication that an unreturned certified letter?
It's a certified and regular mail. They didn't get the regular mail back.
You did not get the regular mail back. Was there any other attempt to, to reach out to the Manzos, other than those two attempted, uh, forms of correspondence?
I tried to reach her by telephone, but never had any luck.
And what does that, what does that mean? Like, you couldn't get her phone number?
Didn't answer the phone.
She didn't answer her phone.
Lord, the whole time that we were trying to do that. Mrs. Manzo is an elderly woman. She's about 90, I think, and she's not, doesn't always answer her phone.
I have on, uh, other, in other matters that I'm representing individuals, and I've attempted to contact the Manzos, and the only contact I've ever been able to make is through an attorney. And the attorney tells me he has no response. That's the Manzos attorney, so I, I don't know whatever, what other efforts we could make, uh, than we tried.
All right, so, so you tried by, so you tried by, regular mail was not returned. And you tried by phone, but no one answered the phone. Okay, go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Travaccino, would you explain to the board what it is that you propose to do on this particular piece of property? Can you see, Mr. Travaccino?
I would like to build a one-family dwelling on the site as per the plans that I submitted.
Uh, any questions from the board?
Any of the, um, any of the board's experts have any, any questions for Mr. Travaccino about that?
I do not. At this time.
All right, Mr. Travaccino, if you can just explain to us, um, there's a comment in, in, uh, the planner's letter that this house is a, a little bit large for this piece of property. I mean, I mean, did you consider building a smaller house?
Yes.
And, and why, why are you not building a smaller house? Why are you building a house?
No, 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 I have not considered. I thought this plan would be appropriate. But to please the board, I can cut it down a little bit.
Well, by, what does that mean by a little bit?
How much you think I'm out of the way?
Terry, do you wanna, do you wanna deal with that? Because it's really a question for you. You're the one who made the comment.
Yeah, and I think this is probably gonna listen dialogue, uh, from both sides. Um, as indicated in our August 19th review, um, we had several comments beginning on page 3, and our comment 3 is where we raised the issue. Uh, on this particular property, um, you have, uh, I believe it's a 50 by 150-foot property. It's very narrow. Um, uh, the second issue, which is just as significant, is that you have two property fringes. And if you look at the zoning requirements, uh, in the R100, which this property is within, uh, you have two front yard setback, uh, requirements of 35 feet. They meet it with regard to Grand Avenue for the currently proposed home. Uh, they do not meet it by a long shot on Willow Avenue, uh, and that is our primary concern. Uh, you have a front yard setback proposed of 10 feet, where 35 feet is proposed. Um, we had, uh, I believe this is our first or second review that we issued. Um, we had originally noted that there were no similar single-family developed properties within 200 feet of this property. Uh, and we recommended that we get information on 500, uh, which is the exhibit that the applicant, uh, has given this week, and we appreciate the applicant's efforts on that. Uh, if you look at that particular drawing, and I don't know, um, if Mr. Travaccino's team can put that on the screen so everybody can look at it.
Yeah, Mr. Key, if you can get it back up on the screen, we'd appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Um, if you look at that, and I don't know if there's a way to make this larger, but, um, looking at that map, it has several properties, several properties identified within 500 feet. Uh, if you look at, um, the property towards the top left side of that area, uh, I guess Max or someone has the hand there. That is, I believe, 59 Charles. That is the only property within 500 feet, um, that has frontage on both streets. Now, we took a look at that property a little bit further. Uh, the applicant's position, if you look at the photos, is that that's a similar request to what is in, in front of the board now. Uh, in our opinion, yes and no. Um, we understand, just looking at it at first glance, uh, looking at this property further, uh, we had the planning department check into the records. Uh, the tax assessor informed us that, um, this property was developed in 1950, uh, which is about 70 years ago, well before, uh, the current codes and well before recent master plans and master plan reexaminations. Uh, secondly, if you look closely, uh, at the parcel map, uh, while this map is not 100% accurate, the footprint of the home on 59 Charles actually encroaches, uh, into the Grand Avenue right of way, assuming that this depiction is accurate. So you have no secondary front yard setback on Grand Avenue, possibly a minor encroachment, which would not be allowed today. Uh, thirdly, looking at this, and it's hard to tell because I don't have a dimensioned plan, but it looks like the footprint of the property was moved away from, uh, that second or, or the primary frontage in this case for that property, which would be Charles Street, uh, to gain additional front yard setback, uh, at the expense of, it looks like the rear yard setback, uh, appears to be slightly less at least than the 10-foot minimum. Both properties are in the R100A, so they'd have the same setbacks. Uh, if you look at the other pictures, uh, on, on this exhibit, by the way, this was very helpful, thank you. Um, most of the surrounding properties that are within the 500 feet, none of which other than 59 Charles have the two frontages, but if you look at most of these homes, the majority of these homes are smaller homes. Uh, they're, they're smaller rancher, Cape Cod, uh, very possibly many of them, the, the same time period, you know, mid-century approximately. These homes appear to be more in character with these smaller lots. Uh, and just by nature of the bulk variances that are required by dual frontages, uh, it's our opinion respectfully that this house is still too big for this property. Uh, and, you know, it, it, it's our strong recommendation, um, if it, if, if at all possible, and we heard the applicant's testimony, uh, that it's been difficult, if not impossible, to reach the owner of lots 2 through 4. Even a 5 to 10-foot strip off of that adjoining lot 2 would, would make a world of difference on this property. Uh, in the absence of that additional information, uh, we simply feel the house is too big.
Yeah. Are you, are you speaking about the house being too big because of the footprint, or because it's two stories?
I believe two-story is allowed in the zone, is that correct?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm not gonna raise an issue with regard to two-story. Uh, I would raise an issue with the footprint specifically, uh, the front yard setbacks. I think if you go with the smaller, narrower footprint, uh, taking advantage of more of, uh, the, the western part of the property perhaps, I think you can get a house. I think you can get a house that's more proportionate with this property.
So if I could just put in my two cents, looking at the house, knowing the street to have a lot of children on it, I'm not seeing a real big justification for having such a substantial move from what the setbacks are required to be. Having a front yard with a 10-foot setback with kids that are riding their bikes and walking those, that street as often as I've seen them, that's kind of concerning without a real good reason why. So I don't know if you can elaborate as to why the house can't be made within conformity, or at least certainly a lot closer to conformity with the requirements.
It started with a side triangle on that corner, too.
Right.
Terry, would you address that question?
Yeah, the pictures of the houses that are up on this screen, do they depict the neighboring houses? And I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is, are the majority of them one-story, and there's just a few two-story houses sprinkled in? I guess that question is for the applicant.
Bob, can you answer that question? Bob Key?
Yes, I can. Just listening. Those pictures up there are just the pictures of the undersized lots in the, of the houses on undersized lots.
Okay.
A majority, a majority of the new, especially the new houses, and there's four or five new houses, structures, going up within the 200, never mind the 500. But a lot of the existing buildings are two-story throughout that, throughout that whole area. It is an up and coming area. And if I may continue, we took these pictures just, just recently. The, our site itself, when you were describing the setback and its appearance towards the street. If you look at the existing house that is built, that we were just talking about, the two-story one, the lot size is relatively the same. It appears as though it's set back further, but it's not the, the actual right-of-way, which is where you're setting it back from, is far off of the existing paved area. And that is true on our site also.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback that if I could, Chairman. I agree with Mr. Key's statement. And as a matter of fact, if you look at the side view of 59 Charles, if the partial map is somewhat correct, and I, I expect it is, that side yard from that stop sign into that property, that's not their property. That is, that would be entirely the right-of-way portion of Grand Avenue along that frontage.
A good portion, yes.
You know, I, I, I agree with Mr. Key's statement. I don't believe that's a rationale for pulling the house closer.
No. By the way, the, part of my testimony I was going to be giving, but I might as well put it in now. We prepared these maps just this week because of rushing to get it into the board before this meeting. And we utilized the existing tax maps to identify the individual properties and stuff, and get some more accurate measurements on the individual lots that we have shown as undersized in that area. However, we also used the Monmouth County GIS mapping that's available, which was taken in 2018. And they're aerial maps paired by the county, and you purchased them online and stuff. And they do not necessarily, because it's all done by aerial and some, some drafting, represent that that building is actually over the property lines. A lot of times the GIS, when they do the overlay and put the property on, they're not that accurate with it. It's just a representation that there is a structure on that particular site, not to its exact location on the site.
Mr. Key, would you address Ms. Freeman's questions about the, the front yard being only 10 feet? And explain the setbacks that are set forth in this application, and what the frontage on Willow Avenue is with regard to the edge of the pavement like the house on Clark Street.
Well, according to the, the engineer's plan, the, the plot plan that's there, he actually shows the dimension setback from the existing property line itself. And he shows the pavement edge in front of the property in question. A scaled distance of that comes out to approximately 22 feet from where the building is going to be to the actual pavement itself.
And but for the fact that this is a quarter wide, the 35-foot front yard setback would have to apply to both sides of this property?
Can I just interrupt here? One second. Paula?
Yeah.
If you have a, a, a picture of the exact layout as per the property, I guess a plot plan of where the house is going to stand. Thank you.
That's our Mr. Wu's plans. Second page of Mr. Wu's plans. Over to the right, over to the, over to the right, the next.
The upper right-hand corner.
Last one, this one?
Yeah. No, go down, go down one, go down to the next one. And it's the.
Okay, well.
Stop right there.
Yep, it's, it's the corner, the upper left-hand corner, I mean, the upper right.
Upper right-hand corner.
Right, and that's blocked by the, I think it's because we have the Zoom people over the top of it. Can we move them? There you are.
Yeah, you can, you can move the Zoom people to the corner. Okay.
I'm learning this new technology. So you could, there's the, the site plan, right there.
I got you. So I guess looking at this plot here, you got, you got a 50-foot wide piece of property, and it looks to me, I guess the back set is like 10 feet on each side?
10 feet on, when you're looking at the house from Willow Avenue, it's 10 foot from the front and 10 foot in the back.
From the back. So you have a 30-foot wide house, or length, whether, you know, whichever you want.
28 foot wide.
28 foot wide. And obviously, what's the depth of the property?
From, from Grand Avenue, it's 150, 150 feet.
Right. So in looking at your percentage of lot coverage, you're under that. Am I correct?
Mr. Wu, can you address that?
Percentage of lot coverage?
17%.
Right, so, and I guess maximum is 20%. So you're under that?
Yes.
And I guess the problem with our engineer, no, our planner?
Planner.
I apologize. Is the 10 feet back set from Willow Avenue, am I correct?
That's correct, Chairman. I think if you look at the, the illustration to the left of that plot and green plan, what they have labeled existing plot plan. If you look at that, there is a very thin rectangle that's identified. That is the development envelope based upon strict interpretation of the zoning setbacks. That is saying that the applicant has a hardship, which is why they're, they're here.
Correct.
And we can certainly appreciate. The issue is that it creates a hardship when you have a dual frontage that your code requires 25 feet and, or 35 feet, excuse me. And the applicant is not saying, well, I'll come in with 32, I'll come in with 28. They want to come in with 10.
Correct.
It, it, it is, it is a significant encroachment within the bulk setback requirements. We had cited, I believe it's the last paragraph of our August the 19 letter, and, and we acknowledged that this pertains to new development as referenced in the master plan. But we had noted, one of the recommendations is, the zoning standards for the Frenow area of the township should be reaffirmed. For lots within the sewer service area, the 10,000 square foot minimum shall be reaffirmed. The 2015 master plan reexamination indicates new single-family residential lots should not be smaller than the minimum lot size permitted in the district, and should also meet bulk requirements. New developments should continue to reflect land development standards. Now, we understand this is.
Is that in your report?
Just if, I'm sorry, sir?
Can I ask where that is in your report?
That is our comment 10 on page four of our August 19 review. Now, just continuing on if I could.
I'm sorry, I'm having a difficult time trying to locate that because in the copy of the letter that I had, the paragraph begins, "Should the board approve the applicant's request?"
Right. If you look at the last page of the August 19 letter?
Yes.
Signed by, by Jason Klein.
No, I've got it signed by Anthony Abruzzio.
You're looking at the wrong letter. You're looking at the CME letter. You want to look at the RBE letter.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. Just if I could continue one. We acknowledge that this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. We acknowledge that single-family residential is permitted in the zone. The issue is, it's an undersized lot. The preference, if it could be done, is obviously to acquire a small amount of property from adjacent lot two, preferably. We note that lots two, three, and four are all owned by the Manzos per the 200-foot setback. And, and we hear what the applicant said about difficulties contacting Mrs. Manzo. That is the preferred remedy, is to try to make this a conforming lot. Short of that, short of that, assuming that all remedies have been exhausted legally, what do you do with an undersized, non-conforming lot? Well, you know, I, I'm not a board member. I'm going to speak out loud. Your lot size is approximately 74% of what the zone requires. Maybe you should have to have 74% minimum of all setbacks as a guideline with what would be proportional on this property. And if you were to apply that rationale, and I say the word if, that I'm, I'm speaking hypothetically, if you were to apply that rationale to try to come up with a more proportionate house for a 7,500-foot lot, 50 feet deep with two frontages, you may, you know, you would come up with a secondary frontage of approximately 25 feet, and the resulting rear yard setback could, could, could be reduced to approximately seven or seven and a half feet. You come up with a narrower house, which I understand may not be ideal. You would also have the opportunity, if you look at the proposed plot and grading plan layout, you have at least 40 to 45% of the property to the west. You have open property there. It may be possible, I'm simply putting it out there, to look at a, you know, a smaller footprint, perhaps an elongated footprint, that better mirrors the property itself and the setback requirements.
If I might just add, I think that the planner just put forth, or better articulated, what I was trying to say is that there seems to be a compromise point that there, I, I haven't heard a good enough reason not to justify understanding why the house couldn't be made smaller, so we get a little closer to those required numbers, or a lot closer. So I thank you for re-articulating what I was trying to get to.
Thank you.
With regard to the acquisition of lot number two, that would then create an undersized lot in number two, unless this applicant was to acquire all of that lot?
But that property is, your property owners list shows the owner, the ownership of lot two, three, and four by the Manzos.
Yes.
So that could simply be incorporated into lot three and/or lot four.
Yes. But without, without their consent, we can't do very much.
Yeah, I'm going to leave that to the attorney. I'm just the planner.
Yeah. Perhaps in, in one of the suggestions that the engineer made was with regard to the size of the house. The applicant has considered that, and with regard to the driveway, there was mention of the driveway. And the applicant was just discussing with me if he was to reverse that house so that the driveway came off of Willow Avenue rather than Gerard, rather than Grand, and make the front of the house facing Grand rather than facing Willow. That's a consideration that, that the applicant would be glad to provide to the board. Is that so, Mr. Travaccino?
Yes, that's so.
If there are no more questions from the planner, Bob, is there anything more that you want to say? Bob Key? Are there any other issues that are raised in that review letter that you'd like to address?
We jumped around so far. Full presentation and.
I feel your pain, Bob.
And I don't know where to really start. I was trying to make my case to, to say that the variances.
Bob, let me jump in for a second. And are we, Mr. Granata, are you proposing that you're going to move the house? And, and, and show it coming from the other direction? Is that what you're saying?
The applicant is addressing one of the concerns that was raised in the engineer's report about the driveway.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a different.
That he would use to, to address that issue.
My only concern is that then that's a completely different application. And we'd have to see the house, we'd have to see the house turned, how it fits, driveway going the other direction. I mean, I don't even know if it's worth Mr. Key going into.
Well, Mark, respectfully, if the board was to consider the application subject to the presentation of the plan reversing the house.
I, I don't know how we could do that. We're not, we're not, we're not looking at, but we're not looking at what you're proposing then.
Yeah, but the, what is being proposed is the setbacks, the variance on the setbacks. And if the board will consider the setbacks and grant the variance, then the, then the location of the driveway is not one of the conditions of the variance. It's just the, whether or not we fit into the zoning requirements of the front, minimum front yard and minimum side yards.
I, I don't know that I, I mean, I'll, I'll leave that. Can I, can I ask Terry and Anthony? I mean, does that, right, I mean, shifting the house, doesn't that so faces the other direction with the driveway going the other direction? Does that change everything?
The concern that we have, more frankly, and I've heard this with other applications, we may understand it, we being Anthony and myself, because we do this for a living. The board respectfully may not understand what they're voting on without seeing a clear illustration in front of them. And since they're going to be acting on, on some form of relief, I think that there should be something drawn up that they at least know what they're looking at and what the relief associated is. You're, you're not going to come up with an alternate sketch that fits this property unless you're going to put something in that little narrow strip that's on the plot plan. So, you know, my personal opinion, I think the board should see something.
And, and, and even in your mind, Terry and Anthony, you can chime in too if you want. If we just, if we turn the house, does that really, and the driveway shift, does that really do away with the concern that the house is still too big for the lot?
It may help, but again, we don't know to what degree it's going to reduce the, the variance conditions.
Right.
It may very well help. Is the board going to be satisfied with it? Without seeing an illustration, I don't know how, how we can say that.
Okay.
Mark, I, I, I just for my, for myself, my, my personal opinion, if, if if the applicant was going to essentially swap the frontage along Grand, quite frankly, I'd still rather prefer. quite frankly, I'd still rather prefer to have the driveway on Grand because being that the right-of-way, if you really look at this thing, for forgetting whether it's grass area and the actual edge of pavement, the right-of-way itself, you would have the majority of that driveway within the townships' right-of-way, which really isn't preferred either. So I I think Terry's kind of point, which is what I try to kind of drive home to the applicant sometimes also, is that, you know, you have an undersized lot, so really everything should be proportionate to the size of the actual lot itself. So if you have a 20%, which I think they have, if I'm reading the chart correctly, it's 05 for the actual, for the actual footprint itself, based on the 7386. You know, that's all well and good, but I think what Terry was trying to kind of drive home is the fact that if you did the 75% of the setbacks, you would probably get a narrower house that fronts Grand, but you could also use an extensive part of that rear lot, which would which would now be the rear lot essentially, to the west, and it would probably look more appropriate on Grand Avenue. And for Willow, it wouldn't look as bad because, quite frankly, it's a side yard at that point. It's not a front yard. And I think it would benefit, I would think it would benefit the the board to kind of see that.
Yeah, I I.
But Anthony.
I think Anthony makes excellent points.
Right.
I think if you do that, you're going to end up with more of a rancher concept in terms of the footprint, which would explain why you have so many ranchers in the area.
But Anthony, you're still saying if you do that, the driveway still doesn't make sense on, you still want the driveway still on Grand Avenue.
My my preference would be to have the driveway on Grand Avenue.
Because it goes over the right-of-way if it's on Willow.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you you look at where that footprint is now, and even if they kind of narrowed it down a little bit, you're still going to have, quite frankly, my my issue is the right-of-way on Willow, which is extensive, that you're going to have a majority of that right-of-way within the within the right-of-way, which means you're going to have cars hanging over within the in the towns right-of-way, which would not be preferred.
I I don't understand what that, Anthony, are you on video or not?
I am not on video.
Yeah.
Anthony's scared to show himself.
Okay.
Yeah.
The driveway that you're talking about, cars will overhang, I don't understand that concept.
Yeah, I think the issue is if I can kind of look at that, I I saw the same thing when I was looking at at Mr. Key's exhibit today. There's a big difference in right-of-way width between Grand and Willow and some of the other cross streets. Your typical right-of-way, I believe, is 50 feet. Grand has an 80-foot right-of-way. And if you look at the the plot and grading plan, that's why you see so much of the driveway is actually off of the property between the front edge of the property along Grand and the edge of the car way.
Mr. Wu?
Yes.
Are you still here?
I'm here, listening all the time.
You've been listening to all of this discussion. Do you have anything to add or to make suggestions or to tell the board about the plan as you prepared it?
Yes, I do. I've been to this side many times. On the whether or not we change the driveway or reduce the 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 building size, the key point, the key point is the front yard setback on the Willow. And the because the size and shape of this property, 50 by 150, no matter what we do, we need a variance application approved by you guys because we we do need the, we do need the front yard of on the Willow. The 10 feet, we can, we can move back a little bit, but if we move back too much, it doesn't make sense, and the house will be look ugly. It's like, like, it's like a trend, long and narrow. The size will have to be proportional, the width and the length. If we push back too much, the house is very ugly. But the the front yard setback is the only thing that happens. Everything else, coverage, everything else, we 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 follow the the code. I'm asking the 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 board, consider the nature of this lot. It is long and narrow, and we we will do whatever, Gary will do whatever to satisfy you, but we, my opinion, we cannot push the front setback too much.
Mr. Wu.
How much is, how much is too much?
I don't know. I I can talk to Gary. Now we have 10, 10 feet. We can move back to 15. That's my idea. If we move too much, the house will be looking very, very ugly.
Oh, you 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 could reshape the entire house and and maybe start from scratch and come up with a different house so that it wouldn't be ugly. I mean, there are, you know, there are very, very small houses in Aberdeen. And they're not ugly. They're small, but they're not ugly.
I know, I know. I I used a wrong, wrong word. I'm sorry. But I think as I talked to the Gary, right now, the front yard setback is 10 feet, and the I would say if we move back a little bit, it's fine, but it moved back too much. It kills the purpose of building a house there.
I I would just add, I I agree with much of what Mr. Wu said. The applicant's team needs to understand the the board's perspective. They're dealing with a significantly undersized lot, and they need to maintain the character of the neighborhood. 10 feet is simply inadequate. Speaking personally, I'm just a consultant. I don't vote. I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with 20 feet, much less than 15. So I I I think there has to be a compromise. I keep coming back to it. I I understand. I heard about the difficulties with contacting the Manzos. If there was a way to just get a sliver of that property, that would make this much easier for both sides. That's all I'm going to say.
Point. Comment number 10, you know, this clearly goes against the master plan, and as a zoning board, we're supposed to make sure when we prove an application, it falls within the master plan.
Yeah, and and part of the board's decision, should you vote affirmatively, you have to indicate that this does not impair the master plan and the zoning plan. And that's a valid point. The nuance of the. Development. However, you can make a case that the intent is that the town wants regulation-sized lots, if at all possible, in this area. Short of that, you know, the board is limited, frankly, in what it can or should approve.
Yeah, Terry, just to kind of follow up, just so the board's aware, and and maybe just to remind the board that this this section of the town, the the township spent a substantial amount of money to improve this area with gravity sewers, a pump station, a force main, and a brand-new water main and system. And and one of the items that that the township took extreme care in in doing and having us do, quite frankly, is to take into account the size of the lots, vacant lots, the ownership, and what was out there. And to basically size these, the force main, the pump station, and the gravity system so that it accounted for any open space or any open lots that were in conformance to the 10,000-square-foot 100-by-100 lot. So one of the items that really fell short was any item or any lot that was 50 by 100, and quite frankly, there's a lot of them in this development. They are not accounted for for the sewer system. They're not accounted for for the force main. And that was done purposely because I think they were trying to keep the character of the neighborhood intact and not allowing, once sewer went in, to have everyone who has a 50 by 100 lot be able to build on it. I think, I think one of the ideas is, and I think one of the, one of the items is that I I think it really is kind of imperative to to maybe have them reach out to, I mean, Manzo has a 50 by 100 lot right adjacent. If they acquired it, they would have a conforming lot. Conversely, if they sold it to Manzo, Manzo would have a conforming lot. So I I think that's the preference of the township, quite frankly, and I think one of the items that drove the point home was we were directed, when we designed the sewer system, to make sure that we didn't account for every 50 by 100 for a lot to be buildable.
That's exactly what the applicant tried to do with the Manzos, but as you already know, there was no response. The applicant will consider submitting a modified plan for the house to the board to consider. And in light of what has been said by the engineers, to deny an application for any building on this is rendering this property useless. So we'll try to get the plan set forth that the board would consider as the best that can be done on this property. Otherwise, the property is rendered useless by the by the township. So may I ask that we have that carry this, Mark, so that we could resubmit plans?
Yes, that that's fine. And and again, I want to be very clear. I don't think you're hearing the board saying that they wouldn't approve anything on this property.
I understand.
It's just that this this house, as being proposed, we believe, at least what I'm hearing from the planner and from some of the board member comments, is that the particular house is too large. So so so, but I don't think anyone's even implied that they would never approve anything for the house.
I understand that, Mark.
Okay.
That's why I've asked to to carry this so that we could submit plans in line with what Mr. Wu had suggested. Cutting, cutting back a little bit on the front.
All right, and what, all right, that that's fine, but I suggest before we do that, just for for your sake, Mr. Granata, is there anyone here in the, let's just check with the public. Is anyone here from the public who wanted, who would want to be heard on this application? Just so Mr. Granata knows that there is anyone from the public. There doesn't appear to be anyone. All right, so then Maxine, where could this be carried to?
When do you think you could come up with something?
Mr. Granata, how much time do you need?
That's up to Mr. Wu, Mr. Travaccino. Mr. Wu?
Is, can I make a point? Then the board will tell us how much setback they are allowed to, they allow to build. Otherwise, next time we come up with 15 feet, they still say, oh, it's not enough.
No, no, Mr. Wu, that's up to us to decide if we're going to go back 12 feet, 13 feet, 15 feet. Not up to the board to tell us what they want us to do. So we'll, we'll ask you and Mr. Travaccino to consider cutting back the frontage from 10 feet to increase that to an area that's both acceptable to you and Mr. Travaccino. And hopefully, the board will consider that application.
I would do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
redesign.
October 14th would be the next available date.
Okay.
That should be plenty of time, October 14th.
Yes.
All right, so then if we can have a motion from the board to carry this application to October 14th with no further notice?
I'll make a motion.
To carry.
All right, so George made the motion, Allison seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so just so the public is aware, I know there's no public here, but in the event anyone is in the future interested, you need to be here on October 14th at 6:00 PM, Maxine, so I don't mess it up. 6:30, at 6:30 PM, and and I will try to be there too at 6:30 PM. To hear this application, you will not receive any further notice. So 6:30 PM on October 14th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
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 All right, we still have some business to take care of. We have some memorializations here. V19-101 Brown.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I believe, unless I am mistaken, and Maxine, you can correct me, that we could do all these at once. I think it's the same vote count for everybody.
The one that can vote would be Mr. Bucko, Mr. Phillips, and Mr. Sinclair. The other ones are on here.
All right, so so Tom, you can do them all at once.
And that's on all four memorializations, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are we in favor of?
Well, we need a motion.
Okay.
You can make it.
I make a motion to approve the memorializations.
I think Bruce seconded it.
Okay, all those in favor?
We ought to roll, you should do a roll call.
Mr. Bucko?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Sinclair?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else that you?
No, I got nothing else.
You have nothing else?
Nothing else.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close this meeting.
Second.
Seconding it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the ayes have it. All right, are you off, Maxine?
No, we we.